Welcome, everybody, to our committee meeting, Committee of the Whole. We will go ahead and get started. It is January 18th, 2022. We are meeting tonight for our Committee of the Whole meeting. Our Committee of the Whole meetings are where we preview and discuss items that will be up for vote in our February board meeting. So tonight, we are not taking any action. We are just discussing and kind of having the opportunity to ask questions and look at items that will be up for a vote in the future. So with that, I am going to do roll call. Director Decker here. Director Sproul.
Here.
Director Smith.
Here.
And Directors of All Ortega.
Here.
And I'm Director Barrows, I am also here. I will go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Snell.
Thank you, Director Barrows. Are you seeing my screen? Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead and turn it into slideshow and walk you through the beginning of the meeting and then we'll turn it over to Brett for contract review. And one item, I think Kathy is going to walk us through his calendar for next year. So just a couple of informational items first. And the superintendent's report, I wanted to talk briefly about the legislative session. I'll continue to give you at least a couple of times a month update, maybe not weekly when we're in the every week cycle. As you know, the beginning of the session tends to be a lot of different bills introduced and a lot of information. And then it starts to narrow down to some themes that may be emerging from the session. And as you know, this is a short session, which is always good for us in terms of our budget development and staffing model. As they tend to finish on time and before our contractual dates of employment notice for the next year. So it's always a little bit of less pressure, I guess. Some things that I just want to call your attention to, I guess, themes that we're seeing in the session that when we adopted a legislative platform, I guess, looking at this year, that are kind of hitting on some of the things that we were talking about. So the first one is enrollment stabilization. And as you also know, sometimes there's a Senate bill, sometimes there's a House bill, sometimes there's companion bill. So I will try to list them accordingly. And then sometimes they consolidate at the end and the actual bill turns into something else or is a part of the budget compromise. So enrollment stabilization is one that looks at just kind of pandemic effects. I testified on support of the Senate bill last week. I included that in some information to you if you wanted to see my testimony. And anytime I do testimony, I always check in with the board chair. So Director Barrows has a chance to just review it, make sure that whatever I'm potentially saying is aligned with what we discussed as a board superintendent team. You never know how much time you're going to have in that one. It was three minutes supposedly. And then when I got on, it was one minute. So I always have to kind of be ready to consolidate and share. Also, another set of bills are staffing allocations. Things in particular on this one are around mental health, so counselors, safety, nurses. So those are ones that we're paying close attention to. And obviously, those are great needs for districts currently. And anticipate in the future, those will be needs as well. We're also involved in looking at the transportation formula. It's pretty outdated and really hard to make sense of. And so there's been a regional effort, which Brett is a part of, to just try to help kind of uncover the complexities of the transportation formula and make it really more user friendly from legislators so they know where the funding is going and why. So there's some bills related to that. And then the last one, just on the radar, is the simple majority for capital bonds. Right now, that's 60% plus one. And there's been advocacy for a number of years to try to move that more towards the simple majority. You know, we have been greatly blessed by bond support in our community. But we also know in the region, there's been districts that have really struggled to get to the 60% threshold. And because of that, their their facilities and resources have, you know, struggled to keep up. So that's where we're at with the legislative session right now. I think always happy to answer questions either during these meetings or also as you're hearing things or wondering about different legislation. We have met with all of our local officials prior to the session. Tom Hagley, Brett Bullock, myself, just to articulate the stance that you all took. And then also to be available to answer any questions as they're in session. So any questions about the legislative session today? Okay, I'll keep this moving then. I wanted to spend some time just reviewing the pandemic planning and response. At our meeting last week, we spent a lot of time talking about the flip to remote in four day cycles for secondary schools because of the bus driver shortage. I want to go into a little more depth with where we're at right now. Our case rates in the community are really exploding, honestly. When you look at the curve that's happening as Omicron has descended upon us. As I meet with public health, we have these, you know, just kind of weekly check ins and then other opportunities with Department of Health. You know, we're definitely seeing these high number of cases. And we update our dashboard weekly, the district level one, the school sites are updated daily. This is going to jump up a lot because tomorrow, when we update, we've just been processing a lot of cases. That's the bad news. The good news is that we're not seeing high levels of transmission in our schools. The vast majority of those, when we log them, are no evidence of transmission on school site. So that's good news, although we just are dealing with a lot of cases. So it's something that we are mindful of and we keep interacting with public health just to make sure, you know, are we doing everything we need to do to keep staff and students safe? So our testing has been a theme as well. I pulled some data just to show you the dramatic change since winter break. And so we had been running our testing program for about 45 days in 2021. We started sometime near the end of October, I think. And all in all, we did just over 2,400 tests, just under 2,500, I guess, which averaged out to about 55 tests per day. You can see the positive results were pretty low, too. And then when we came back that first week from winter break, the five days, we did 1,000, over 1,000 tests. So our average went up four times a day. And our positive test results were going up as well. And then on this last week, we only did 3.6 days because we ran out of tests. But you see, it actually worked out that we did the exact same number of tests in the 3.6 days as we did in the five days before. But that averaged out to almost 300 tests a day and the positivity rate was increasing. Now, the good news, I wanted to make a note here because our high point was on January 12th. So is that Wednesday, maybe, I think? And that was 426 tests. And then Thursday and Friday, we saw a dramatic drop. So I don't, you know, know what, you know, I'm going to take that as a positive sign, right? Like, we're always looking for positives. And so on Friday, we did 217 tests. So we're hoping that maybe that's an indication of what has been reported in the media that maybe the peak is upon us or hopefully we went through it, something like that. So we'll keep this updated for you as a board so you can kind of see where our tests are tracking. Also, we are starting to roll out the test to stay program. So there's some details to that where if you are symptom free, you can stay in school, even if you are a close contact or exposure. And there are some test requirements. And so it used to be only a student option. And then the Department of Health updated that over winter break. And now it's a staff option as well. And so we're going to, there's going to be some communication that comes out to our staff about that, which I shared with you this afternoon. I wanted to give you some data related to attendance. This is working up on this graph. So the most recent attendance day we have for our students was Friday. And you can see we're just over 70%. When we started coming out of winter break, started tracking attendance that second day, third day, we were at 82%. So we're definitely seeing an impact to our students who are out, whether they're sick or contacts or whatever it might be, could be any reason why they're out. But overall, the attendance is definitely going in the wrong direction. And then we also are tracking our certificated. And some of our classifieds, these are primarily the classifieds that are in the building. And so we're really using this data to fill unfilled positions. So if we have somebody that's out, but they're not directly serving students, we probably aren't filling their position. These are all direct service providers of students. And so we really have to figure out how to fill their position. And you could see that with our certificated, we peaked on Friday and we had a better day today. Certificated. And then our classified has been kind of, we're again, hopefully trending down. We'll see how this data plays out. The other nice part of this is our unfilled positions have been trending down overall as well. So it means that our substitute pool is coming back a little and we're able to fill these positions. But today, we had 162 unfilled direct service positions. So that means staff are scrambling, recovering extra, taking on other duties, that kind of a thing to make it work for the day. So I've mentioned before that our public health communication is really critical for us. They just give us great information. We asked them to review what's happening in our schools and monitor that. We asked them to look at our mitigation strategies. And at this point, they are not recommending any pivots to remote as a mitigation strategy. So what that means is that to try to slow the spread or thinking that, you know, that if we pivot to remote, that's going to automatically like kind of help with the spread. They don't believe that's the case. And the reason that they've shared with that is because our student to student transmission, student to staff transmission hasn't exploded like the other cases, right? Like, the cases are happening, but it's not, we're not seeing that transmission at high levels in schools, outbreaks and things like that, but they are monitoring that. And as you have articulated before, and I think the next slide, we talked about this back in August, when we were rolling out our plan, just the different topics of mitigation strategies that we're trying to do. And who kind of dictates what's going on with that, right? And so when we are talking about these mitigation strategies, you know, I've been following the guidance that you provided earlier as to align with public health on these and certainly the requirements, but also with recommendations. And so we had the recommendation from Clark County Public Health back at winter break to pause wrestling. And so we aligned with that recommendation. And so I think that that's the course that I'm hearing from you that we should continue to take, but wanting to make sure, just kind of check in with you all on where we're at with this. And before I do that, I want to talk about the contingency planning a little more. The last time we went into depth about this short term plan as a result of the transportation impact. But we're also looking at that staffing district wide, the data that I shared with you and the student attendance. We're in week two of this. So this week, we have Skyview, Columbia River, Jefferson, Alki and Jason Lee in remote learning and Fort Vancouver and Magalufin came back on site today. And then next week, we'll cycle through the rest of the secondary schools. So long term, we're looking at transportation in particular. You know, our hope is that we bring more drivers back and we're trending in the positive direction on that. You know, unfortunately, we've had a lot of drivers sick, but they're scheduled to start coming back. And but we don't want to just hope. So we are looking at different contingencies that if this was a long term situation, I don't think we want to have rotations of remote learning if we can help it. We would prefer to have it in person for all of our students. And so right now, our transportation team is just trying to plug away at all different scenarios. I mentioned in our last meeting that when we started the year, we needed 124 drivers to run our routes. And we condensed that down to 102. And that's what resulted in earlier drop off, later pickup, some double runs, all those things which aren't what we would like. But it was the way we made it work. And really appreciate the impact that that's had on families and students and staff. I've asked them to come up plans that would allow us to sustain in the 80s. So that's taking the 100 and down from 102 to 80 something now. So you can imagine that it's really hard to squeeze more out of that. So we're looking at just changes to service model, which could it mean expanding the walk zone? We're looking at limited after school routes for our secondary students and prioritizing the morning routes for everyone. So none of these are solutions that we want to do, but we feel like we need to go through and present these to you. And so we'll refine those later this week and then I'll, I'll share them with you just so you can ask questions. Again, we have two, a week and a half left of this short term plan. But I just want you to be thinking about, you know, if this, if this wave doesn't happen and we're still with 80 drivers, right? Like, we need a longer term plan that allows us to continue in person learning. And we need to be communicating those plans to our public so that they can plan accordingly. So I think that's, that's where I'd like to pause tonight and see if there are any questions from what I shared or just any thoughts about kind of staying the course with public health and anything else in general related to pandemic.
Jeff, I always appreciate your thoroughness in detailing what we've done and what we're looking at doing for the future. And transportation is really the cog in the wheel. You know, it's going to be an issue and I appreciate that the team is really looking at. So what do we do if what we've put in place doesn't buy us the time that we need? And you guys are incredibly creative. So I look forward to figuring, seeing what you guys figure out. Thank you.
I'll just chime in. In response to your question about following public health, I feel like that has been kind of our beacon from since March of 2020. And I'd like to see that we don't deviate from public health guidance and that we continue that partnership, which I know that, you know, the admin team has stayed. I think that as long as we are listening to the local experts and the scientists, that is probably the best course of action.
I'm going to agree with Kyle. I think we have public health experts for a reason. And I think following their guidance is, I mean, we've, we have stayed firm with that throughout this situation and that continues to be my recommendation.
As we continue to have this unfold, you know, each week looks a little unique, right? Like, I mean, there's just new factors that come into play. And so we will, we'll continue to revisit this. And I'll keep kind of anchoring in some of these contingency plans just in case so that, you know, there aren't surprises, hopefully, to staff and community. We also are communicating out weekly now. You know, we have a three, two, one kind of communication that goes out. And we're just going to do that weekly for the near future because of the heightened sense of this and the changing variables related to the pandemic. And certainly, I know that you're getting communication as well from differing perspectives on how to manage this. And so if we can support you with answers related to that, please don't hesitate to reach out. Any other final comments on pandemic planning, planning in response? Well, thank you for your attention to that. And I'm hopeful that as we continue, there'll be better news as we move forward. So. Director Barrows, do you want me to go ahead and move it into the next part of our agenda?
Yes, please.
And I'm going to pull up the board docs, Brett, and I'll just follow along as you narrate kind of some of the information and entertain any questions.
All right, thanks, Dr. Snell. So yeah, we have a pretty light load on the contract side of things this evening. So we'll dive right in. The first item on the agenda, I believe, is the memorandum of agreement and corresponding data sharing agreement with WSU and the district. This is to allow WSU to administer their trio talent search program, which is really about helping some of our students that might be struggling with graduation and post-secondary plans and goals, attain those goals. So it's no cost to the district, seems to be a pretty robust program. So it's our recommendation that we go forward with the MOA and data sharing agreement with WSU. Questions on that?
Brett, is this something that we have previously had? Is this a, is this a contract that we've done before or is this something new?
You know, that's a great question. I noticed on the form, and I believe this came out of our CTE department, that the upper right hand corner of the recommendation form has renewal on there, which would lead me to believe that it's an extension of existing service. To tell you the truth, I've never heard of this and I don't remember it in the past. But so it's possible either that I just haven't been aware or they might have recycled a recommendation form that was a renewal and forgot to change that field. So I can certainly check on that and through Dr. Snell or others, we can get that information to you.
Yeah, because it was something new that I, I mean, I, I was trying to figure out from reading the contract, kind of the specific services that they offered. And just one thing that I happened to notice was, I mean, the part of their contract is the need for, you know, like space to work in. And I just was kind of curious whether that's something that buildings are used to, they're used to that, or whether this was going to be something new that now was going to be something that might impact buildings with just needing, you know, space and resources beyond just the contract.
We have a pretty close partnership with Wazoo Vancouver, coming into schools and being a part of actually just like volunteering and helping with students, not necessarily just specific to Wazoo V. And so, but I'm not familiar with the trio talent is a new acronym for me or name. And so we'll do a little research on that and give you guys some context for where that's coming from.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a routine item from our capital projects program. You've seen these before. This one happens to be for Ruth Bader Ginsburg project. And it's our recommendation that you approve purchasing agreement number 2021-085. And that would be the initial furniture purchase for that RBG project. You can see that our selected vendor for this is Hyphen, which has become kind of the popular go to for our new school projects. Staff seems to really like their products and setups. This particular recommendation would be not to exceed the amount of 1,800,000 plus Washington State sales tax. So any questions on the RBG furniture authorization? All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is our recommendation to approve purchase agreement number 2022-007 for school buses. This is just our annual process by which we have a certain number of buses that are depreciating off of the state reimbursement schedule. And whereby then we bring in replacement vehicles, which will again begin accumulating reimbursement, depreciation reimbursement, excuse me. So this particular recommendation in comes the 16 total buses. And so it's our recommendation that we approve the agreement with Western Bus Sales for $1,454,022 plus Washington State sales tax for those 16 replacement buses. Questions on that? All right, then our last item to preview tonight is our recommendation to accept bid number 2019-056. This was the original bid that authorized, looks like it was ParTech Construction to modernize Sacagawea Elementary. So that project has been completed to our satisfaction, fully inspected by the district and all the consultants. So it's our recommendation that you formally accept the project as complete from ParTech Construction for Modernization of Sacagawea Elementary in the amount of $7,288.94 plus Washington State sales tax. All right, hearing no questions on that, I'll turn it back to you, Director Barrows.
Perfect, thank you. And it looks like there are no policy items to review, but there is an item for teaching and learning. I believe this is Kathy Everidge.
So, good evening, board. So what you have in front of you is our yearly review, getting prepared for next year's school calendar. And as you all know, we have a process we go through. We start the process by looking at all the different dates that we have available for the current calendar and how they would reflect on the next year's calendar. We then take a look at whatever Green School District is doing also because we have many of our colleagues have kids in Evergreen. We like to make sure we kind of compare what we're doing with Evergreen's calendar. So we do that review. After we have that review done, we do a draft calendar that we submit to our K-12 operations team. They take a look at it for any conflicts that may need to be adjusted in calendar. Then goes to Cabinet for Cabinet to look at the draft calendar for looking at any adjustments. The calendar is developed based on contract language within the VEA contract. There's specific language in the contract that has to meet that contract language. And we submit that to VEA for their review to see that everything in their contract is in there. We also have our other labor groups take a look at it, see if there's something that they see, maybe that we haven't noticed after different folks have reviewed it. At that point, then we bring it to the board of directors for you to take a look at. As you know, we'll set the start and the end date of calendar year for the school, for the 22, 23 school year. So that's what we have before you. And Jeff, I don't know if you have a copy of that or. And this is our calendar, our draft calendar for next year. We're asking you to consider as a board. And if, once you have some consideration, we would get it on the board agenda for our next board meeting. Some of the days that you'll be interested in knowing that the first day of school in both Vancouver School District and Evergreen will be on August 30th. Winter break for both districts will be December 19th through January 2nd. And then spring break, our spring breaks are the same, which is April 3rd through the 7th, which is consistent. We have a semester break this year that aligns with Evergreen next year. We would have the same semester break. And then our last day of school would be June 15th. The board selects that day as a final day and Evergreen is looking at maybe adding one more day off in their calendar. And they may end on the 16th, they're not sure yet. So it'll either be the 15th or 16th and I haven't talked to their HR department since. But that is the development of the draft calendar for your review.
One question that we got when we were going through this is despite our communication, the study on all year, a modified school year calendar, people had a lot of questions like, well, what about the study? The study is for two, three, four years down the road, part of the strategic planning process. So this in no way impedes the study, but also that study would never turn around quick enough to modify the calendar for next year. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Kathy, for going into all the detail and the process. I didn't realize the number of different kind of eyes and different groups of people that kind of had either input or had their eyes on the calendar before it got to us. So that was helpful context, just to know all of the different people that have reviewed this draft before we get to vote on it. Any other questions for Kathy about the calendar? All right. Well, that is, it looks like the end of our Committee of the Whole meeting. Board of Directors reports, do any directors have any reports or anything to share?
Sandra? Do you want to share your news? Do you want to share your news?
I recently applied for a WASDA consultant leadership position and I was hired on. So I am one of four new hires for WASDA. I don't know when I start yet, but or anything, but it's very exciting. So I'll be doing trainings and retreats and such for other, other boards, not ours. Yeah.
Awesome, congratulations. Excited to see all of the ways that you have stepped into leadership as the newest one on our, on our board. So just as an FYI for our community and for, I guess, for the board as well, next week is our board study session on the 25th, next Tuesday at 5:30. That will be virtual as well. And that, I believe, is our last meeting of January with then our February board meeting on February 8th at 5:30. And it will be Zoom only as well. Any other Board of Directors reports? All right, with that, it is 6:01 and we are adjourned. Thank you all for attending conversation.